Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick mention. We were just talking about here, just got back about an hour, well, actually, two hours ago, they did a quick ceremony called Proud to be American in Elginak by the flag. And it was a great little ceremony. They just had the Pledge of Allegiance and the Elginak Choir was there saying the Star Spangled Banner. And it was very, very nice. And they're gonna make an annual event. And I think it's a good thing. So it was well-attended and kinda made you glad you're American. Roll call.
Sandy Kufel.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Absentance excuse.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes, here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Bills payable, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept bills payable in the amount of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and sixty-three cents.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support. Bills payable of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and sixty-three cents. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments? Come on up, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Cindy Babish. I'm at 477 Maple in Elginak, but I'm also the rec coordinator for Clay Township. And we're just coming off a successful second annual Clay Township DDA Scarecrow Festival. So I thought it'd be nice to come here and publicly acknowledge our sponsors. Of course, we had the Clay Township DDA, the Elginak Pet Center, Ed and Joe Keller, Lumberjack Building Center, Elginak Rotary, Scoreboard &amp; More, Piece-to-Piece Quilters, Chris Amios, and the Randall Foundation. But most important, I especially wanted to sincerely thank our water department, and our fire department, and our police department, and especially our trustees for coming out and working hard at this event. It was truly a team effort, and it was very nice to be a part of that. Thank you.
It was a lot of fun, too.
Yeah, a lot of fun. Did a great job, Cindy. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Hey, Karen. State your name and address, please.
I certainly will. Karen Straffan, 5007 Point Turnbull. I wanted to ask a question. A number of years ago, the old party store by Johnny Legas was bought. And then the party store was torn down, and I know you had plans for it. But it's been a couple of years, and to me, that has turned into Gabriel's Storage Unit and Legas Parking Lot. So when will something be done?
Well, I'm not exactly sure. The DDA actually bought that.
No, I said it was purchased.
Right, right. And there has been some discussions with the DDA, but there's no clear-cut thing that they want to do just yet. They could put it up for sale again, and hopefully, you know, a business go in there.
Didn't Clay Township pay to have the building torn down?
Yeah, the DDA, Clay Township Downtown District Authority did.
So that'll stay for...
No, I mean, they're looking at different things.
Okay.
So, yep, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, hearing none. Move right along to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the board meeting of October 16th, 2017, and synopsis, special board meeting October 27th, 2017, and synopsis, check reports, October building zoning, police, treasurer, and water reports, and the November parks and rec updates. There were no notices. There's communication from the fire department, resignation of C. Gordon. A thank you from the police depart-- to the police department, and a request from assessing for continuing education for Sherri Lawton and Barb Schutt for sixty dollars total.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support. Any discussions or anything on that?
I have a question on page eight of eighteen of Revenue and Expenditure Report, Clay Township, under Fire Department, 694 and 694.01, abnormal balance. Do you have an explanation on that?
What page is it on?
Page eight.
Who is that?
Right up the top.
Other income and Harson's Island contributions? What's that?
It just says other, uh, other income in Harson's Island contributions.
Yeah.
What's the other?
I don't know. We can look that up and get, and let you know.
Okay, and then page nine, Safer Grant Salary, negative of eleven thousand.
If all the payroll's posted, it's probably gonna be negative more than that, only because we have not recouped that reimbursement from that last quarter of Safer Grant that just ended September 24th.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Um, just, I had a, about the synopsis, and it's not dealing with this particularly, particular one, but a constituent asked about why they didn't see it in the voice. Is it, is it not published every couple of weeks or not?
Those two are published at the same time, after this meeting.
Okay, okay.
After the second meeting.
I said I would look into it, so hopefully she's...
Yep, so next week, probably this week's voice, both of them should be in.
They'll be in, okay, good. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on a consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. All right, next, we have our supervisor's report. There is a Lions football game tonight, so we'll get through it quick. We actually still did, been doing a lot of work this past couple of weeks on getting the audit together. We can expect a full report from our auditors in one of our December's meetings. I've personally been working a lot on the purchase of the Columbine property for a kayak launch on Harson's Island, putting together an acquisition budget for it. The DNR Trust Fund will actually pay a little over twelve thousand dollars for any additional costs that we have for assessments or appraisals and studies being done. And I'm actually requesting the County St. Clair Parks and Rec, if there's any overages of that, to actually split it with us. And that's why I have to get this acquisition budget to them also, so they can bring it to their board and hopefully get that done. And there is, I'm hoping for relief. Actually, I just got the email right before I walked in here. When the EPA did that, the Crispin Drain Habitat Restoration Project, they did a lot of studies on that whole grain, oh, it's a grain, and the whole drain on the property as far as topographies and wetland delineation and that type of a thing. And so they're gonna, actually, the good news is they're gonna give that to us, hopefully keep the cost down for us to do all this information, get it going forward. And, um, let's see, that's... And we, in fact, just received today, too, the first draft of the concept drawings of the access site and what it will look like. There is one thing I want to change on it, but pretty soon, we'll be able to put it out for public comment. And we're gonna have to, our next meeting, we're gonna have to schedule a public hearing to have probably before one of our meetings. And then I'd like to do one on Harson's Island also, to have on that. And that will have to be advertised in a paper and everything to be in conformity of the DNR Trust Fund grant to buy it. As Cindy mentioned, our Scarecrow Festival was last week, and it's getting bigger and bigger every year, and, man, it was a blast. Everyone that was there had fun. Yes, it's gonna get bigger and better every year. Also, I want to mention, last week, the police did their hunter safety course. And that's been exploding into something a lot bigger than we, what was the first class? Twenty-five people?
Uh, just under.
Yeah, and that was two years ago, right?
Yep, I know.
Three, three years ago?
Four years ago.
Okay, wow, four years ago. We did fifty-six, they did fifty-six this last week. And it's a great program and teaches them, you know, safety, hunting safety, but also ethics and best practices for like tree stands and this and that. And it's just a really good class. Been looking at, because it's so popular, maybe offering it twice a year. And I just want to give thanks to Chief Coach and Lieutenant Kuligowski, Sergeant Stockwell. I know Officer Chartier was there. Anybody else I'm missing?
Chief Joe Don.
Oh, yeah, Chief Joe Don helped us from Elginak Fire Department, so kudos to them. Excuse me. Wanted to mention that the local Cub Scouts, it was, um, oh, not the Wolf Pack, it was the other one.
Weeble, Weeble.
The what?
Tigers.
Yes, Tigers, that, right? They, uh, they planted six spruce trees along our township. They called me up. "Hey, Artie, you know, we need to do a merit badge thing, and so we'll take trees any day of the week." Right, it was cute. They came out and planted them, and it was, it was good for both of us. Uh, yeah, I did want to mention, too, the city, Elginak City, they appointed a new city manager, and I had a couple of meetings with her, Denise, and I, I, I'm really optimistically hopeful. I think we're gonna have a real good working relationship going forward. And Artie, you know, hit on several ideas, and, uh, and I think I met with her the first time for like two and a half hours, and we only got through about a third of the stuff we wanted to get through. And, uh, so I'm hopeful of that. Uh, let's see. If you're, if the board remembers, we approved purchase of the bulletproof vests for the police and anticipating receiving a grant for that, and we did receive that grant. It was for around seven thousand dollars, if I remember. So that's, uh, that's a good thing. And then also, they started to install the second dispatch seat over in Dispatch, so that's, uh, that ball is rolling. And we just received word that we, uh, we, we applied for a matching grant to repave St. John's Drive, and we did receive that. So that's gonna have to be a general item for our next meeting. It's budgeted to be ninety thousand dollars, and so they're gonna, you know, basically, we're gonna get a fifty percent match. It'll be a forty-five thousand dollar match that will help us with the paving. And like I did mention, too, we did receive the rough draft on the concept drawings for the proposed kayaking site, and we're gonna have to do a public hearing on that. And that's it for upcoming events. We have the Christmas tree lighting in the park next door. The Pearl Beach Lions is doing that December 2nd. Five o'clock, it starts. And they do hot chocolate and donuts for free, rides with Santa Claus. And they have the high school choir singing Christmas carols, and it really is a good event. I'm not sure exactly what time they throw the switch on the light, but, uh, or on the tree to light it up, but it's always a good event. And I want to reiterate, we had the Red Wings bus trip, January 5th. The bus leaves at the Elginak School at 5:00 PM sharp at the high school. And it's, uh, Red Wings against the Florida Panthers is seventy-eight dollars per person. How are we doing on tickets?
Twelve left.
We only have twelve tickets left. Does that include mine? We got eleven, eleven tickets left. And they will go fast. It's a heck of a deal. It is a heck of a deal to see a Red Wings game. So, just saying. And I know, um, we have some, the yoga and the, um, yeah. Okay, it starts tomorrow and Wednesday, the yoga and the, oh, what's the other one?
Zuma.
Zuma classes. They're gonna keep on going. So if you, if you want any information, if you're on Facebook, like Township Parks and Rec, it's all on there, or give Cindy Babish a call in our building department, and we can get you more information, or contact me. So that's my supervisor's report. All right, Fire Chief's report.
Good evening. October is a very busy month for us. I attended three meetings in the month of October. Attended the St. Clair County Police Chiefs Association Meeting, thanks to Chief Coach, he invited me. I also attended the Michigan Township Association Meeting, the St. Clair Chapter. Also, the Fire Chiefs, St. Clair County Fire Chiefs Association Meeting. October 4th, Mr. Ball from the ISO came to the Fire Department on our ISO rating. I met with him for about an hour and a half. We covered the topography of the township, areas that we respond to, personnel, number of personnel we have, the age of our vehicles, the testing of our equipment, and our, uh, vehicles. Couple of things that we're shy. We need to have a fire prevention program, which I'm working on now, and also a inspection, fire inspector's inspection policy. I'm working on that also. So I'll be sending that off to him. October 6th, the department assisted in the homecoming parade in Elginak. October 7th, on Saturday, October 7th, the Fire Department stood by at the Elginak High School for the TAFSA Football League. We had no injuries, which was great. October 12th and 13th, we did, conducted fire prevention program for the Millside Elementary, kindergarten through second grade. Thank you Denise, Bev, and Jonathan, and the Elginak Fire Department conducted that. On October 13th, we stood by at the Elginak, or Algonquin Fall Festival. They had a bonfire back there, so we stood by with our vehicle. Wednesday, the 25th, we had the Point Turnbull daycare preschoolers over. There was about a hundred of them, so thank you Bev and Denise and Logan. Let's see what else here. We had about a total of three hundred children for all three days. So there was quite a few kids that went through, and the kid, the guys and the women took care of. We also stood by on the 31st of this month for the Pearl Beach, Pearl Beach Lions Bonfire, took care of that. And we stood by for numerous football games this month of October, the eighth grade, JV, and varsity.
Is he mean?
It's, uh, we were just talking with Chief Coach, too. It's not slowing down, is it?
No, it's not. It's picking up.
Yeah, we don't have the slow period anymore. Thanks a lot, George. All right, on our unfinished business, we have none. We got everything done. Uh, new business. Number one, first thing, police code, or, um, it's our Smart 911 rollout. Police Chief Coach will give us an update on that.
Okay, um, as if you remember, we had that representative from the Rave Smart 911 come out here, did a presentation as far as what the Rave Smart 911 is all about. Right now, we've got approximately just over a hundred people signed up, which is, I'd sure like to get that out there and see a lot more people signing up for this. The way this works is, as we all know, our cellular phones are becoming more and more prevalent as far as our, our phones within our home or our daily lives. The, uh, the landline in the homes are pretty much a thing of the past. Right now, I would say they're averaging, with our jurisdiction, probably at least eighty percent or better of the households now are cellular phones. With that being said, depending on who the phone carrier is, depends on what the accuracy is when our dispatch receives a 911 call and whether we can locate you or not. So if it's certain cellular companies, they can get you within a close proximity. Some of them are probably within a couple of feet. Now, we got other ones that are gonna get you in with maybe three, four, five hundred yards, which is a big difference. With this application, what this does is allows you to go in, it's a web-based program, it'll allow you to go in, create your own profile. With that being said, you can add your mobile phone number to it, any other phone numbers that you might link, like to link to it as well. You can add if there's any kind of special conditions within your home, if there's anybody with special needs or anything like that, if you have pets in the home, things that you think either police or fire should know that is unique to your situation. The other thing that's nice about this is that will now, if you call in, that's gonna show up with your address coming through your cellphone, which is not, we are not capable of that yet. That is something that they're still working on right now with the new enhanced 911, is getting that location pinpointed. This is gonna allow it to happen, but that's if you are at home. Good thing is, this is a nationwide program, and it's getting bigger and bigger throughout the nation. So if you're traveling, chances are pretty good that you're gonna be within a community that's utilizing the Rave 911. So if you call 911, even outside your area, and it pops up on their Rave system, it's gonna show these special needs or things you might, you might have. Plus, it's gonna show who you are, and it's gonna show your complete profile. Right now, all we get is a phone number, and sometimes, we might only get as much as a cell tower that the signal is bouncing off of. So that's kind of tough. Then our dispatchers have to work some other, some other magic in order to try to pinpoint where you are by pulling latitudes and longitudes and that, which takes extra time. Um, the system has proven itself many times over and over, but doesn't work unless you sign up for it. And I can't urge people enough to get on the website and search for this. If you come onto the Township's website, if you look onto our Facebook page, like us here at Clay Township PD, we also have the information on there that will give you everything you need and all the tools in order to sign up for it. With that being said, you can also contact our department anytime if you have any questions whatsoever, and we'll do whatever we can to help you out and try and get anybody up and running with this. Um, I, I think it's an excellent program, and, and it's definitely the future, especially with the way our technology is, is going. So highly encourage everybody to sign up for this program.
Can I expand on that a little bit?
Yep.
I, I, I signed up for it, too, and what I thought was really cool, you can, you can say, "Okay, I have three bedrooms upstairs and one bedroom downstairs. My son Johnny and daughter Sally, their rooms are upstairs. My room's downstairs." You can upload pictures of your kids, your pet or whatever, and if there's medical needs or anything, you can put that in there. And the cool thing about it, as soon as they call, and that can go to the patrol cars, too. They, you know, or the fire, fire department.
Leads you in the right direction.
Yep, they, they know, "Okay, we have two kids possibly upstairs, and they're in these two rooms."
With that, it holds the same thing true for businesses.
Right.
And right now, we're working with our schools as well, because as we know, I mean, with something that's that size, they could be calling from anywhere within there. Well, depending on what extension it is that they're calling from, that will give us a pinpoint location of where the 911 call is coming in from as well. But these are all things that you have to go in, you have to manually set up within the system, so.
Say, "Chief, you need your, uh, location switch turned on on those phones?"
Generally, yes. But now for the, the Smart 911, you won't with that, because that's still gonna come up with your caller ID, and then your caller ID will, is gonna be what populates this. Um, now, as far as if you're not using this and you don't have your location turned on, what's gonna happen there is where we can get that information as far as latitude and longitude, we're not gonna be able to get it at that point.
Unless you're in, signed up for this.
Correct.
Okay. And does Ira have it?
Yes, this is, this is...
Our dispatch.
This is everybody that we dispatch for. I know St. Clair County is running this now. Macomb County is running it as well.
Or are they? If, if I'm an Ira and I call, who's gonna pick that up?
We will.
Here or Ira?
Pick the, this is, this all comes into our dispatch. Everything is populated right in our dispatch. So if you call 911, it's coming to our dispatch center. If you're within our jurisdiction, anything will be populated to our dispatch.
And what if I'm in New Baltimore?
If you're in New Baltimore, chances are, it's gonna hit Macomb Counties. And in Macomb County, if that portion of Macomb County, they do have it up and running, it will still show your profile and who you are.
Okay, good.
And another thing, too, if you're worried about Big Brother watching you, putting any information, we, we don't have access, the dispatch doesn't have access to that information until you call 911.
Right.
And then shortly after...
There's not a database of this.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And shortly afterwards, you know, it disappears, so it's not like, you know, the dispatcher or their, you know, their board, they can go up and look, look at your profile up.
Right, that does not work that way.
So there's no real reason for not doing it as far as security or Big Brother watching.
Right.
I, I signed up it, online, took me ten minutes tops. Uh, and again, to do that is smart911.com, so.
Yep, can't beat it. And if I could, I'd like to touch upon some of the things like George was talking about, and a lot of the things we had going this month. And what's nice is we've been working together on a lot of this stuff, and we've had a lot of fun with it. Like you were talking with the Hunter Safety Program, I gotta say, it was just a fantastic group of kids we had. I could not tell you how pleased we were with how polite these youngsters were. It was really nice. Afterwards, how many of them coming up, shaking our hands, saying, "Thank you." It was really nice to see. And they were a lot of fun, very attentive, and everybody did a great job. I mean, across the board. It was really nice to see. And, you know, it seems like every time we do this, we have more and more fun with it. And as you see, the program keeps growing more and more to where we're gonna have to start putting on a couple of classes a year. But those are the things that are definitely a lot of fun between that. And, you know, we did a lot with the Trunker Treats and, you know, Scarecrow Festival and all that. And, uh, and the one other thing I wanted to touch on is, I know I had brought to your attention about Sergeant Stockwell and Officer Fajardo going out to New Mexico for the Homeland Security Training. Uh, they did go out for that, had a great time out there. They learned a lot, became national instructors over this. So these are things they can come back and they can get everybody else up to speed within our department. So kind of some of the things we're trying to do with the Train to Trainer. I've got Officers Dowell and Chartier going to training here Thursday for what's called Milo Training. It's a new setup that the academy has. And this is basically, it's kind of like you see the, on TV where they've got the live, the screens up and all the way around with the scenarios going, and it's about as lifelike as you're gonna get for shoot-don't-shoot scenarios, and trying to put them into as close to real-life scenarios as you can. And I'm trying to put everybody through that. We've got more scheduled for the first of next month, but the training, we're hoping to get a lot more in, a lot of good things coming. And what's nice is the state's been opening up a lot, too, and helping out on the cost of this. So it's really working out well.
Thanks, Chief. Good job.
Everybody's pretty pumped up.
Oh, yeah. Good job.
Don't go anywhere. Here, up next.
Well, next thing on, um, on our new business, wanted to tell the board. We had a, I approved an emergency repair on our Explorer. We were doing some work on it, and lo and behold, we had a blown head gasket. And what, rather than waiting, you know, two and a half weeks to bring it to the board, I approved it as emergency repair. It's for twenty-four, two thousand, four hundred and seventy-six, I believe, and seventy, fifteen cents. But, uh, I mean, it wouldn't make sense for us not to fix it.
Well, in this kind of way, I made sure I put in your packet. We kind of wanted to get a ballpark estimate of what that vehicle was worth so that we weren't just throwing, uh, throwing money away with it. Uh, the vehicle's still in very good condition. Vehicle's only got just over a hundred thousand miles on it. Um, and it's equipped for what, what we need and the purpose that we use it for. So it works out, you know, in that capacity. But the, we first brought it in because what ended up happening is one of the, we had an issue with one of the can- one of the cams on it that had to be replaced. Once they started getting down further in it, they found that the head gasket was gone too. So that's why I threw it in your packet to show you that, you know, what the vehicle's overall worth is, so it was worth doing the repairs on it.
Who did the repair on it?
Bob's auto.
So I'd make a motion that we approve the emergency repair on the Explorer at the cost of $2,476 and 75 cents.
Support?
Have motion and support, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Next thing, we have requests for, to solicit in Clay Township for the Downriver Goodfellows. Entertaining motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the Downriver Goodfellows request to solicit in Clay Township, November 25th candy cane sale and December 9th paper sale. This goes for their Christmas, I believe that they help out with families, kids and families.
Support?
Okay, a motion of support, any discussion on that? It is a great program and they do a lot of good things. My thanks to all the Downriver Goodfellows, I always call them Great Fellows. No more discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have treasurer's request for update billing. Handle that, Kristy?
So what's attached is the proposal for KCI to print and mail the winter tax bills. So that's not a change, that would be the same as we currently have been doing, but what we wanted to add this year was printing on the back of the bills. We would add some information that we feel would be relevant and useful for the residents, interest days, when taxes are due, forms of payment, all those kinds of things that they're calling for weekly. And then also the holiday hours on the back of the coupons so that they have that handy when they're making those payments. So we're just looking for approval on that. The cost to print on the back of the bills is about $40, so it's minimal, and I think it's pretty good useful information for them.
Similar to the Clay Connection on the back of the water bills, yep.
Is that going to be a recurring charge?
To print the back of the bills?
I mean, monthly, weekly, annual?
Well, this is just the winter tax bills, they only go out once.
Winter and summer, right?
Yeah.
Twice a year.
So it's just a total increase of $40?
Yeah.
Can we get our regular office hours, like a little bit bigger above the holiday hours?
Um, yeah.
Only because I'm here on Fridays, a lot of time on Saturdays, and you would not believe the traffic, and our office has been closed on Fridays for years.
Yeah, we can add that.
I just feel bad, they always want to walk up and pay something and...
They're closed.
Usually they don't have an envelope so they don't drop in the box.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the request to update our tax billing for $2,891.19. Support?
Hearing a motion, all kinds of support. Any more discussion?
So you're saying that prior to this, we didn't have anything like that on the back of the tax bill?
Yeah, it was just blank.
And how did we communicate it at that point in time?
The bill itself. The bill itself.
Well, with all the information on the back?
They call and we answer.
So it wasn't in the newspapers or online or anything like that?
Well, I mean, our hours and things like that are online, and you can look that kind of stuff up, but a lot of our residents are not online, so it would be helpful, I think, to have it printed on the bills.
I just have a concern with it. I don't think it's a necessary cost, but...
With the $40 additional? Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Okay, let's show that Mark's nay. Motion passes. Okay, next, new hire, administrative assistant. He did some interviews. Actually, we had a team of Kristy, Sherry, Lawton, and myself. As you all know sadly, Barb's going to retire, and the plan was that Sherry, our now assistant assessor, will become our full-time assessor, and we're looking for to hire an assistant assessor to backfill Sherry's position. We wanted to get her in here to train her and make sure she's up to speed when that sad day comes and Barb leaves us. And we interviewed some very good candidates, and I think we all agreed that Ms. Wendy Meldrum was the best, and Sherry's recommended that we hire her to the board. Come on up, Wendy. And Sherry, you can come up too. We just want to embarrass you a little bit.
That's okay. Hi, I'm Wendy Meldrum. I live at 1527 Washington in Elginak.
Yep, she lives in our community, and actually, when we hired Sherry, Wendy, at the time she worked full-time or part-time at Baltimore, we darn near hired her then.
Yeah.
I know.
So she's been wanting to come to Clay for a while.
So...
Actually, I think she would really be a good fit for the administrative team that we're building here. She has a lot of municipality experience and very well-versed in the BSNA software, which is an amazing benefit to us, you know, that will alleviate many months of training. I think she's perfectly capable of learning the additional assessing stuff. She's already familiar with some of the forms that we use, and she's versed in many modules and different departments, so she could provide additional support for the other departments in the township also.
I'm familiar with somewhat with Wendy going into the Elginak office occasionally.
Yep.
Very helpful down there.
Yeah. There will be some fieldwork probably involved, but we're actually looking for the spring and summer to implement possibly an internship program with the high school or college students to assist in the fieldwork, whereas that would leave someone in the assessing department, whereas right now Barb and I both go out, and so that would help also.
Good.
Yeah.
And your start date would be November 13th, is that right?
Actually, I think we've changed it to the 20th.
20th, okay.
Just based on some vacation scheduling and stuff.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Wendy or Sherry? We did put it in the budget to do this.
Yes, it was already a planned position, knowing that I would have to take on some of Barb's responsibility, leaving obviously someone to take on some of my responsibilities. So we had already planned and had this approved in this year's budget.
I have a question about the deputy assessor's duties.
Mm-hmm.
I've never, in all the years I've been involved with the township, knew that this is, is this a new thing, deputy?
Well, we kind of refer to it as assistant assessor, somewhat like what my position is now, but the deputy wouldn't be full-fledged as far as the certification level that I have and stuff, so it would be similar to like the deputy clerk or deputy treasurer where they take on some additional duties other than the regular office, but not full-fledged into the assessing.
A deputy clerk or deputy treasurer is a statutory state-regulated...
Oh, I see, okay.
Just like a parson.
It's a state, they have to have it.
Oh, they have to have it, okay. I see. I know there's some other municipalities that do refer to it as deputies, so maybe my wording was incorrect. So it would be assistant.
Because I have a real problem with that.
Okay, so we could definitely rephrase that to administrative assistant or assistant assessor. But she wouldn't go through the full-fledged certification like I did, but we would require the MCAT, which is the Michigan Certified Assessing Technician. So we can definitely, you know, revise that.
Because Barb and you always are going off to school for continuing education.
Always, yes.
And so she will have to, Wendy, you have a lot of qualifications, but in this particular instance with the assessing, you've got lots of work ahead of you.
Yeah, yeah. She is familiar with some of the forms because they are presented at the counter, so, but the assessing technician program will definitely give her, you know, a wider range of knowledge for that. And there'll be some continuing education for that. It's a little bit less than what we currently need to do, but definitely.
And another thought I had too, this is just my thinking, because I looked in our policy manual.
Sure.
And our handbook, which drastically needs to be updated.
Updated.
Updated. And so that's another project we can do. And as far as a stipend is concerned, I don't know why we have to call it a stipend, you know, and if a new hire has like a three-month probation, is it three?
They do, nine days.
So that nothing would happen regarding that stipend until she fulfills that. I'm, you must all know how I am about rules and regulations and things.
Agreed.
And I, I have no problem with it down the road, as long as, maybe she won't like it here.
Right.
Maybe she'll get a better job down the road or something, you know.
You're next.
I would like to say that that is held off until that probation.
Absolutely.
And we bring that back again to the board.
Okay.
At that time.
Okay.
I would like that, you know, because I know by looking at your resume that you have a lot of qualifications. I'm not against hiring you, but those stipulations I would like to see.
Okay.
The issue I have was with the deputy, and only for the term of it being, as you know, being a deputy clerk right now. You have the full power of the clerk when the clerk is not around, so Sherry not being here, you would not have the power to be a full assessor if she wasn't here.
Exactly.
So we wouldn't want to give her a false title.
Right, exactly.
But if she's going for a tech certification, I have no problems calling it a assessing tech, referring to those job duties that she's going to be doing under that tech certification. But I would want to see her get that tech certification before we pay her a stipend for it. I mean, if you're getting a stipend for being a tech, you have to be one, I guess.
Or you could call it a coordinator.
But she's going to be duties outside of the union.
Right.
For the assessing tech position.
Right, that's why the additional pay, because, you know, she's going to be in the union, but she's actually going to be doing other work that's outside the scope of our union contract.
Right, but she has to be to have that tech certification to do that work.
Not necessarily, not all of it, not like the fieldwork or anything else, you don't need, you know, the...
Well, then that would be listed under the rules and responsibilities in the job description. We can make her a job description, whatever we want. If she needs a certification to do something else, well, then we can give her a stipend because she's doing something that isn't part of a basic job description that anybody can walk in our office and do.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, but like I say, it's work that's outside the scope of the contract that she'll be doing, that's why we wanted to actually do that.
Are there stipends in this department right now?
No.
No.
But Sherry's on the union contract.
It was handled a little bit differently when I was hired because we knew I was going to get the additional certification levels to take Barb's position, so I was taken out of the union contract. Whereas this position doesn't really require those additional certifications, so we're leaving it as part of the union. However, there are many duties outside of it. But I do believe I can check into it, and because you prefer to wait the 90-day probation for the stipend, she probably can achieve the certification within that time. So then the stipend, she would have the certification and then receive the stipend, you know, simultaneously.
Well, and I think part of Joanne's concern was not training her, because she may not like it and leave, so we wouldn't want to train her for a certification and then have her leave or not like it here.
Gotcha. So if we scheduled it for 95 days or something and she got it, then all would be well, I think.
But I have no issues, I mean, within the parameters of the job description attached in the union, within the union right now, but...
Otherwise, we would, because the job description was a little bit modified, you know, to encompass some other departments also, so if we included the additional duties that were required more in the assessing end, it probably would, you know, qualify for those additional duties. But we're willing to work with you because I, again, I believe that she would be a really good member to have with the team that we're building here, and I think she would stick with us. I mean, you said you'd stay with me until I retire, so we're looking forward to forming that relationship.
I'll make a motion to hire Wendy Meldrum, like I said, within the union scope of the job description provided, and do you want me to automatically put in here, revisit 90 days?
Yes, I would like that, I would like that.
From 90 days from, you said November 20th is the start date?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that we get an update on it or where we're at, because this is kind of new.
It is, it's a unique position because we're trying to really open some other doors, like I said, with the fieldwork, internship, and then utilize her past experience in all the other departments, because we do see some holes in other departments, you know, when we have lunches and people out sick and vacations and just extra, you know, projects going on and things, so being able to utilize her without additional training is, you know, really a bonus for all of us.
Was that a motion?
The motion was to hire Wendy in accordance with the union contract and the job description provided, and revisit 90 days from her start date for potential additional stipend.
Support?
Hearing a motion and support, any other discussion? So we'll visit her stipend in first meeting in February, right? That would be about 90 days. One thing I see under the job description on her supervisor is, has it reporting to the township clerk? I think it should be reporting directly to the assessor since the assessor is going to, she's going to be...
She can't because of the union contract. The union contract, they report to the supervisor, the treasurer.
So the supervisor's over the...
And an administrator.
So I would say that would...
But she's not going to be an assessor, she's also going to be doing water billing, and the majority of this is office administrative. Her stipend for your assessing duties is not that much in addition to her 40-hour union work week. So when I had posted the internal posting, it was posted with the township clerk, but could be under the day-to-day supervision of the assessor.
And when we look, we did that policy manual, and that's stated under personnel administration, and I think we need to follow along with what is said in here, just from...
Right, I do too, I'm the head assessor.
Right.
But she's not going to be an assessor, she's administrative.
Well, she should be an assessing technician and...
I mean, 80% of her is going to be under assessing.
Is her stipend going to be worth 80% of her pay?
No, but probably a lot, a lot of the, I don't, you know, she's going to be the assistant assessor.
Eventually, yeah.
If she gets a certification beyond tech, yeah.
Okay. Or revisit that thing too.
And then she'll be out of the union contract.
So could this be termed as an EIT, employee in training? For the assistant assessor?
Do we have that?
Huh?
Isn't the issue the union contract part of it? Isn't that, don't they have to report to an elected official?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So maybe the supervisor has the assessing department.
So that was my motion, and we did have support.
That's what I would think.
Okay. We have a motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries, congratulations.
Welcome, Wendy.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes all our new business. Do we have any forward member comments? Sandy, how you doing down there?
I'm wonderful, I'm kind of lonely down here.
Yeah, I see that.
I had a lot of things to say, but I don't want to bore everybody, it'd be longer than your supervisor's report. First of all, welcome Wendy, and thank you, Sherry, for thinking outside of the box a little bit on how to utilize her skills to better benefit the whole office instead of just... skills to better benefit the whole office instead of just your department. That's awesome. Um, there's been a lot of positive and encouraging things going on between the fire department, the police department, water department, all the events in October, and I just wanted to say kudos to all you guys, and thank you very much. It's been a lot of fun in the community this month between all those events and our football team and all the things at the school. Um, Scarecrow Frost was wonderful, Cindy. Thank you for putting that all together. And go Muskrats, and I hope to see everybody in Frankenmuth on Saturday.
That's right. Kristy, you have anything?
I do. Welcome, Wendy. I wanted to say thank you to the police department again. I had two, two of my children were at the Hunter Safety classes. And I was a little worried that after a long day at school and then sitting, I mean, I'm a girl, so I thought maybe they might get bored. But they came home every night. They wanted to tell us stuff that they learned. They loved it. So I wanted to say thank you for that, 'cause my kids loved it. And then also, um, everyone, while you're cheering for our varsity muskrats, also cheer for our younger muskrats who will be in Port Huron, and they scheduled the games at the same time for Rumble in the Thumbs. So we can't go to the game now, but we do get to go to the little kid games, so.
Awesome.
Go all the muskrats.
That's right.
Big ones and little ones.
Our local AYFL has some teams in the rumble this year.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Awesome.
Mark, how you doing down there?
Great, great. All excited to see the township moving forward with the, uh, services, including the fire department, police department, the water department, and the assessor department. I'm glad to see everything moving forward. It's, uh, it's, it's a good thing to see. Uh, one item on the, uh, uh, fire chief's report, the fire prevention and fire inspection. We can get together, like to be a, a little bit of part of that, uh, if you don't mind. Especially on the, uh, fire inspections in the township. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Just a question to you. You're on planning. You're our representative for planning.
That's right.
Are there any meetings coming up or anything?
We have a meeting, uh, Wednesday, uh,
Tomorrow, this, this week.
Right. Uh, the, the site plan, the site plan that we were going to review has been, uh, canceled, tabled for now. There's too many issues with the, uh, condo, site condo and, uh, um, DNR and wetlands. So, uh, they're reviewing that, uh, and come back at a later date. And that was about it. That's the Folk Road, uh, project.
But you're still having a planning question?
We're still gonna have the meeting, right. We have other issues there that we'll be discussing as well.
Okay, um, my, uh, my feelings are that we have excellent morale with all our departments. Our fire department, our police department, the township board, um, assessing, and it's a good feeling. And I think that's so important, and everybody's happy, and it makes for, um, good communication. And that's part of what you guys have been doing, is really communicate and keeping us, everybody up to date. And I think that's a, a kudos to everybody, and just keep up and keep the kids happy, keep the voters happy, and, uh, keep moving forward with, uh, making this a great, great township.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, uh, trustee Oregan isn't here to give us his official report for
Muskrats?
Elginak muskrats, but, uh, we hope to see them go further than Frankenmuth, see everybody there for chicken dinner on Saturday.
Yep. Saturday, one o'clock, right?
One o'clock.
And we, it, we, there is a bus, isn't there?
Is there any seats left on that bus, or they filled it up?
There are seats left. Um, first come, first served. We're walking in with payment at Scoreboard and More. There's a bus going Saturday leaving the high school at ten. Costs twenty-five dollars a person.
Good deal.
Scoreboard and More?
Scoreboard and More. Six-two-four Michigan.
A lot of happiness going on.
That's right. Yeah, I'd just like to expound on that. Are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. Uh, we do have a lot of positive things going on, and, uh, um, it's good to see. And, uh, just keep them going. I mean, every week, I'm like, wow, that was fun. That was cool. It's been a great football weekend. It's last weekend. My Spartans beat Penn State. Okay. And, uh, the mighty muskrats are just awesome, doing a great job, and we, we have the Lions, uh, in about a half hour, so go Lions too. So, uh, other than that, uh, just, everything's been positive and good, and let's keep it up.
I would like to mention for those of you here, I didn't make a big deal about it because by the time anybody sees this on Facebook, it would be too late. But make sure everybody here goes and votes. If you happen to catch this in halftime, polls are open, eight to eight on Tuesday.
Seven to eight.
Seven to eight, yes.
Seven o'clock tomorrow? Yeah, till eight tomorrow. So, all right, everyone, thanks for coming.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, okay, let's get out of here. Good job, Madison and Crystal.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you for meeting with you.